At this time, I call the February meeting of County Commissioners to order. We have with us tonight Ms. Beth Dawkins. Lincoln United Methodist Church, that's the county attorney making all that racket. Ms. Dawkins, if you would, come to the podium, pull the microphone down. And after the invocation, Commissioner Tankersley will lead us in the pledge of allegiance of the flag.
Let's bow our heads. Father God, as we gather in this place tonight, Father, first and foremost, I want to offer you up our thanks and our praise for all the many blessings, Lord, that you give each of us every day. Lord, our hearts are humbled because in addition to the blessings, Lord, you give us grace and mercy need for each and every day. Father, I invite you to be in this meeting with us tonight. Lord, make your presence known, dwell among us, and rest your hands upon each person here. Father, I pray for wisdom and discernment for each of these commissioners. Lord, put your hand of guidance on each shoulder. Guide and direct every decision and every discussion that's made here tonight. Lord, you've given us a wonderful place to live in, and we ask that your business be conducted here in a manner that is pleasing to you tonight. Father, thank you for the gift of Lincoln County. For those of us who've called at home our entire lives, we don't know any different, Lord, and for those who've come to be with us, we welcome them. And Father, we are always mindful that you have given us this place to live. So help us be good stewards, Father, of what you've given us. Help us take care of it. Help these men be able to govern it in the way that they see fit according to your plan because we all know that your plan and your will is perfect. Father, I ask that you would grant us safety and travel mercies as we leave this place tonight. And Father, I ask for rest for the night, too. All these things, we pray in your son's precious name. Amen.
Our pleasure is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Dawkins, thank you for coming and doing that part. We appreciate it. Item four is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion that we approve the minutes that's sent to you?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clive. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye. Aye. All opposed, like, sign. The motion is carried. Item five is the approval of the agenda. We have a, an addition to it that was given to us. The lady is an EOA grant for the leisure services, senior citizens transit. Try to get, get a little grant money for them. I would like to add that to eleven, Madam Clerk, and then we would take your numbers down as we go from that. Also, we have a postponement of item number nine. We will take it off, and that won't be coming up at tonight's meeting. Mr. Attorney, you have something we're doing?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, there is a legal matter that the, the commission needs to address, and I would ask that that be placed on the agenda, and probably we would need an executive session for that.
Okay, we'll add at the, after number twenty-two, which is probably twenty-three now, I don't know whatever the number is, last thing on, we'll go into the executive session to discuss some legal matters that we need to attend to. With that, is there a motion that the agenda be approved as deleted and added?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye. Aye. All opposed, like, sign. Motion is carried. Item six, Department of Reports, six A is the Office of Emergency Services. Director Broom is not here. He called earlier. I think he, we had a bad accident this afternoon, and I think he said if he wasn't back, he'd try to get back, but if he wasn't, he was probably on an ambulance. So you have his reports in your book. Six B is Recreation Department. We have some activities going on at the recreation complex, so Director Glaze is not with us, but you have his report. Six C is Finance Department, Director Dawson.
Chairman, Commissioners, you have received our report, and if there's no question on the regular reports, I will provide the cash balances.
Any questions, Director Dawson? That being done.
Cash balances for the month ending January 2024. General Fund, three million eight hundred and eight, excuse me, three million eight hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. SLOST seven fund, one million six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. One million six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, thirty-seven dollars. American Rescue Plan, one million one hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. Solid Waste Fund, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars. Transportation SLOST Fund, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. Water Reserve Fund, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And the Emergency Fund, three hundred and one thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars. Chairman, Commissioners, there are several other funds here. Those are the major funds. The total cash in all of our funds at the end of the month of January was ten million four thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Our investment accounts, Raymond James Twelve Month CDs, one million six hundred and twenty-five thousand. Raymond James Enhanced Savings Account, five hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Raymond James Holding for Transfers, fifteen dollars. Our total cash equivalents in our investment accounts are two million one hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. Our total cash and cash equivalents for the month of January 2024 is twelve million one hundred and forty-one thousand, fifty-three dollars. Chairman?
Heard important, Director Dawson. Any questions? Okay, we'll accept your report. Item six D is the Public Works Director Randy Fisher.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, good to be here this evening with you. You had my monthly reports from month of January. I have nothing to add. Is there any questions that I can answer for you?
Any questions, Director Fisher? Thank you. Okay, last month, we approved a new department. We have Department of Community Development Director Stephanie Iker. Pull that microphone down, wagon here.
Chairman, Commissioners, you have my reports. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions to have about community development? That's, community development, mostly planning and zoning, and all of the supplementation, building permits, code enforcement, I don't know, few other things. Look on the website, tell you what she's, she's, she's got. We split that back up. Okay, there's no questions, Director Iker? Thank you. Item seven is the time we go into a public hearing. Is there a motion that we go into a public hearing to hear reports from the Office of Community Development?
I made most, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clive. Any discussion on the motion to go into a public hearing? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye. Aye. All opposed, like, sign. The motion is carried. We are now in our public hearing. Director Iker?
Monday night, the Planning Commission heard the special use request for Shane Stewart for the Glamping Facility up on Lake Shore State Drive. That was a revisit from January. After discussions for pros and cons, the Planning Commission recommended that the Board of Commissioners deny the request for the special use.
Okay, we have a special use request with LLC, three point four acres, R2 zoning So we are in our public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against the special use for this for the Glamping area? Okay, how many we got? Two? Is that all that's gonna got? Three that's gonna be speaking against the request? We got four? Let me get my calculator. Okay, here's what we're gonna do. I don't know, who, who wants to go first? Can you come to the microphone or not? I understand if you would come, and I'll try to hear you. If you would, when you come, state your name and address, please. Will that microphone reach out?
My name is Nancy Stone, and I live at one two three nine Lake Shore State Drive in Lincoln Town, Georgia. My husband and I have been property owners down on Lake Shore State Drives for twenty-seven years, since nineteen ninety-five. Everything we own and have worked for our whole life is in our home down there on our one acre of land, so it's very precious to us. I've been attacked publicly because I posted on Facebook the date and time of the meeting for this month for the zone. I've been called the looky-loo, a troublemaker, a bomb thrower. And I just think it's really sad, and I think the commission needs to know that the facts of what's going on with this whole thing about a building permit being gone lapse and them having to come back forward like everyone else in this county if you let your permit lapse. But instead, I've been attacked. Now, a week ago Tuesday, I had eighteen inches of my intestines taken out, and I'm not even supposed to be out of the bed yet, and I couldn't come Monday night because I had just gotten home from the hospital Sunday night. But I'm here today to say it's my concern for the safety and the serenity of our, I don't want anybody, I'm not putting anybody down, I'm just saying what we have is not, does not blend within our neighborhood, and my concern about my privacy and the serenity of my one acre of heaven that I have on earth is protected. Thank you.
If you would, state your name and address, please.
So Kerry Ellis, one two five nine Lake Shore State Drive.
What's your name again?
Kerry, K-E-R-R-Y, with a K.
Kerry?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're new residents to Lincoln County. We've been maybe two years, tops. We bought out there for the peace and quiet. If we hadn't known anything like this was going on, we probably wouldn't have bought that piece of property. You know? So I just, you know, like I said, we moved out here for peace and quiet. I've worked in Lincoln County off along all my whole life. Everybody I come in contact with, nice people, solid earth people, you know, I, I come from a place where Richmond County did not ask you, can we put this here? They put an industrial park, they built Starbucks plant, they got a, they got a smelting plant going on there. You hear tractors running twenty-four, seven hours a day. That's why we lived there, to come out here, to just be at peace. You know, our concerns are, just like Ms. Stone said, personal property rights, personal security, you know, we're in between, we're the only thing in between this project and the lake. So when we go to the lake, eventually we go down to the lake. If you go to the beach, eventually you're gonna make it down to the beach. So I don't see fun in all these people from this big expanse down to the lake. They're gonna venture out, tuck through our yards. We gotta worry about personal liability. They trip over somebody, or even if they trespassing. Nowadays, they're gonna try to see you, and you probably win. You know, like I said, we're not trying to put Miss Toolman or anything like that. You know, I've talked to her several times, nice lady. But this is a residential area. Businesses, you know, don't belong to a residential area. If it's their previous and you buy next to it, that's when it imposes on the resident a business, and especially a business that is going to be built to attract outside people, not even people that have a vested interest in that neighborhood. You know, they're not gonna be resident, you get nobody owns, maybe you invite them on the property. You're gonna have people just kind of wandering through, doing what people do. So I feel like it would just be a total invasion of our privacy to let this thing go forth. So I please ask y'all to vote no on this move, on this motion.
Thank you. The next one, come on. Anybody else? If you would, state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is April Zoner, and my address is thirteen seventy-nine Lake Shore State Drive. My husband and I own the property directly adjacent to the Glamping. We are here to voice our concerns of granting the special use permit, thus allowing the unparalleled access to our rural residential neighborhood. When the Glamping initially requested the special use permit in 2021, we, along with our neighbors, voiced our concerns at the planning meeting held on February eighth, 2021. Ultimately, the commission voted to approve the special use permit based on the conceptual drawings presented by the Glamping on February eleventh, 2021. Per the Lincoln County Code Ordinance, Section thirty-four, one thirty-seven, the Glamping had until February eleventh, 2022, to complete all pre-plat requirements and submit a final subdivision plaque for approval. The code clearly states that a subdivision, that if a subdivision plaque is not submitted for final approval within the one-year period, the preliminary approval shall be null and void, and the applicant shall be required to submit a new plaque for pre-plat review subject to the then-existing zoning restrictions and subdivision regulations. We are here tonight due to no fault of the county. The Glamping did not meet the code requirements within the one-year period, and now, two years later, is requesting a new special use permit for the fifty-three acre parcel that is zoned residential. This parcel has always been zoned residential, even when initially purchased by the owner of the Glamping. The application for the special use zoning request outlines four standards that are required to be met for approval, and we believe the request does not meet at minimum two of those four requirements. Requirement number two states, "The location and character of the special use shall be compatible with the community development pattern and consistent with the needs of the neighborhood." We wholeheartedly believe the Glamping is not in character nor compatible or consistent with our residential neighborhood. Lake Shore Estates is a quiet, is a quaint, quiet rural residential, one lane, extremely narrow and hilly gravel road. We are a neighborhood of twelve families. Some of us, it's a late, it's a late retreat for us. Some families live there full-time, some families visit, and our properties are right at an acre. My neighbor and I share the same sentiment, that when we purchased our homes, we were drawn to Lincoln County by the peacefulness, solitude, and quiet living on Lake Shore Estates. Much to the contrary, Phase Two of the Glamping is a fifty-three acre parcel that is projected to have fifty-five rental sites, to include geodomes, safari tents, treehouses, and container boxes, in addition to twenty RV sites. These types of dwelling are not in character or compatible to our neighbor home, which is consistent of homes. The Glamping touts itself as a lake resort, again, a lake resort, yet there is no lake access from the fifty-three acre parcel. Yes, there is a small proposed pond, but absolutely no lake access. There are no other campsites, state parks, or resorts in our surrounding community that are not self-contained. The only lack, the only lake access for this expansive development with fifty, with, I'm sorry, seventy-five rental sites, which will garner an estimate of more than two hundred people at capacity, is funnelled through our residential neighborhood on a cart path leading to Phase One of the Glamping, which is located on Lake Shore Estates Drive and within fifteen foot of our home. Phase One is less than an acre on a narrow lot that currently has an office and four geodomes that look directly into our home. The possibility of funneling in an entire resort through our rural neighborhood in Phase One is something as a homeowner, we would have never envisioned, and I don't think anyone would. Each of our properties, including Phase One, are only projected one hundred foot at the shoreline. By the Corps of Engineer regulations, the Glamping will ever only be permitted for a single slip dock, which is what they have now. We all have, we all have docks pretty close together on our street. We have a true concern of patrons attempting to shore their boats along the shoreline. The only boat ramp in close, close proximity is a one-slip boat ramp that does not even have a parking lot. On the overview presented of Phase Two, it clearly shows that there's going to be an equipment rental area, which will lead to a plethora of people on the water for motorized and non-motorized activities. Again, this is not compatible with the community development pattern nor consistent with the needs of our neighborhood. This is a small rural residential area. We are not a state park, campground, or resort with expansive shorelines or beaches. We are also genuinely concerned about having a large customer base, being provided direct access to our neighborhood and our properties. It is a rite of passage when camping to explore, and having a, having a cart path that opens and is funnelled straight onto our street will undoubtedly lead to patrons accessing our road by pedestrian traffic, golf carts, bikes, and ATVs. We understand that the main entrance will be off of Highway seventy-nine, yet the official address of the Glamping is Lake Shore State Drive. GPSs will sure map people to our street, which is a dead end. And I cannot emphasize enough how narrow, hilly, and a bit dangerous our street is. A significant of traffic, a significant increase of traffic is guaranteed. A head-on collision by a car, golf cart, or bike would likely be imminent. Again, we are a neighborhood. This is not normal nor expected, and it's certainly not compatible with the community development pattern nor consistent with the needs of the neighborhood. There are many amenities proposed for Phase Two, and one of the most concerning is a rifle range that is less than five hundred foot from my front door. Exposure to noise greater than a hundred and forty decimals can lead to permanent damage, can lead, can permanently damage hearing. Almost all firearms create noise that is over the hundred and forty decimal level. A small caliber twenty-two rifle can produce noise around a hundred and forty decimals, while high-powered rifles and pistols can produce sounds over a hundred and seventy-five decimals. The continuous noise generation from, generated from the operation of a rifle range is obviously not compatible with the community development pattern nor consistent with the needs of the neighborhood. And to our second point, standard number three, per the special use application states, "The special use will not be injurious to use and enjoyment of the natural environment or of the property in the immediate vicinity or diminish and repair property values within the surrounding neighborhood." After speaking with our realtor, our property value has significantly decreased, and he firmly believes it will be difficult for us to sell our property due to the development of Phase One of the Glamping, which is a commercial business that operates in a neighborhood, and our property value will continue to decrease with the expansion of Phase Two. Our haven is no longer our haven. Now, when we sit on our porch, we stare directly into the four domes and unsightly tarps that are hanging in the tree. We have lost a sense of privacy. Each of the domes have massive openings that look directly into our home. Standing in my kitchen or rocking on my porch, we can see their customers, and they can see us as well. Again, this is something you would never expect in a residential neighborhood. A neighbor, yes, but not this. When you visit the Glamping Facebook page with more than ten thousand followers, on the main cover photo, our house, our boats, and golf cart are on display, and there are more than thirty other photos that include different parts of our home and property. Again, this is something you would never expect to experience in a residential neighborhood. We wholeheartedly believe the Glamping is not in character nor compatible or consistent with our residential neighborhood, and it is injurious to use and enjoyment of the natural environment and our property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next one, I know it's at least one more that wanted to come, okay. If you would, state your name and address, please.
Jason Sawinski at thirteen thirty-nine Lake Shore State Drive, two lots on the other side. Kind of lay out a whole lot other than what April had said, but I, I feel the same way. We moved out there, my wife and I have been out there for about five years, and we moved out there because it's nice and quiet and peaceful, and again, not to be in the middle of a campground. We used to do a lot of camping. We do know how camp, that campgrounds are, and again, we're out there because it's nice and peaceful. It's just not something that's, I feel, appropriate for the neighborhood. You know, it's maybe a good idea, but just not in our neighborhood. Thank you.
If you would, state your name and address.
My name is Amanda Scaboni, and I'm at one two three four Lake Shore Estates Drive.
Thank you. If you would, put that mic just a little closer to you. I'm hard.
Is that better?
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we bought our house, May will be six years. We lived in Martinas. We bought our house to basically get out of the peoply scene. We liked the peace and quiet that was initially offered out there, but now with the Glamp sites, there is more traffic on our road, and then with the expansion, it would only, it would only get worse. Our biggest concern is that our house, like, sits directly in the middle of her fifty-three acres, and so based on her plans and whatnot, the horse farm would be pretty much in our backyard, which is not something that we are interested in with, you know, sitting on the back porch, swimming in our pool, whatever, and having the horses there. Like several of our neighbors mentioned, you know, it's nothing personal. I've talked with her a few times. She's very polite, so it's definitely nothing personal. I do, I don't want to see anybody not succeed in things that they set out to do. I just do not think a neighborhood is a place to have campsites, you know, RVs, and all of the high traffic that her plans would probably bring onto our road. April pretty much covered everything, so those are just some of my personal concern. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to speak against the special use? Okay, is there anyone? Ms. Stewart, do you want to talk first? If you would, come to the podium, and you might have to adjust that microphone tall as you are, but if you would, state your name and address.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shane Stewart, thirteen sixty-nine Lake Shore Estates Drive, Lincoln Town, Georgia. I am here for the Glamping. To my neighbors, and to everyone, thank you all for being here, and thank you. I wish that there was another way to do this. The Glamping has been there open and operating for two years. I have visited my neighbors. I have checked in on them. I have had quite some experience with some of my neighbors, and I simply said, okay, my neighbor's a neighbor, and I'm going to be a good neighbor. But not one person in two years has approached me with any issue whatsoever with Glamping. That being said, regarding, regarding the concerns that were raised in opposition to the Glamping. Requirement number two, actually, no, I won't start with that. Lake Shore Estates Drive is approximately, that community is approximately seventy-five They are twelve dwellings in the neighborhood. Of those twelve dwellings, there are four of them that actually live on Lake Shore Estates. All of the other, and that is four. All of the other, and that is four point five percent of the community. The others are vacation homes, which is five vacation homes under Lake. Lake Shore Estates Drive is a weekend destination, even for the people that property only trust Beach Drive. As I mentioned, there are only four families that live there permanently. The Glamp Inn is an adult-only, not a campsite. Yes, we call it camping, it's a camping, camp, camp. However, if you have been to Glamp, looked at Glamp...
Ms. Stewart, if you would, step back to the microphone.
If you took a look at the plants for the Glamp Inn, you read through them, the shooting range, which we covered in 2021, supposed to be an indoor shooting range, no noise. My only experience with anyone shooting on Lake Shore Estates Drive are my neighbors practicing shooting and teaching their children how to shoot. I don't have an issue with it, but that's how shooting works on Lake Shore Estates Drive. We're no longer having a shooting range, so even though it was indoor and there's no noise, we're doing a vineyard and wiring instead of a shooting range. It is an adult-only resort. There are no kids, there are no ATVs driving down the street, there aren't anyone run, wandering around. Our guests that have been to the Glamp Inn so far come there for their honeymoon, they come there to celebrate their birthdays, they come there to celebrate their anniversaries. These are grown adults, not children. They've come there for what Lake Shore Estates Drive offers, which is everything that the residents say, the peace, the tranquility, and to get away from the city. And the Glamp Inn is bent on making sure that that is what we offer our guests, peace, tranquility, and an escape from the city. That's it. Does anyone have any questions? I said, does anyone have any questions?
Ms. Stewart, may I ask?
Well, no, we not, we, we not, we not gonna be here for question and answers. Now, if the commissioners have the questions, they welcome to ask them. I don't think there's any question. Thank you, Ms. Stewart. We're not coming back to the, to that part, we, we over to the other part. Is it anybody else here that would like to speak in favor of the special use? Watch your step, don't hit that camera leg, okay? If you would, state your name and address when you get there. Speak into the microphone, too, please.
Hello, my name is Hope Beard, and I do not live in that neighborhood, however, my address is two nine six Sunrise Drive, that's in Lincoln, Georgia. I did want to just say that the Glamp Inn is very glamorous, and I don't know if you had the opportunity to view the website, but it is very luxury, it's very nice. We're actually planning on having a women's retreat there for my mental health group because of the peaceful, serene nature of her estate or glow, or whatever you call them. But we're super excited about, I'm going out there to actually get a peace of mind and get, um, mental health, mental clarity, just the perfect place for that. So if you haven't seen it, I encourage you to take a look at it, and it would be a really real shame for us to have to travel miles and miles and miles away from Lincoln County when we reside in Lincoln County, just to have that type of experience. I feel like it would be a great contribution to the community, and I also feel like it would bring in additional revenue for the community, which we could really use. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I saw another hand, did I? You know it, state your name and address.
I live in England, I live at ten thirty-three Elberton Highway in Lincoln. I went out there today just to see what it looked like. I understand the concerns about there being a residential area, but I wanted to voice some concerns about our economy in Lincoln County in general, I guess. This kind of thing, I don't want a Walmart here, I don't know about y'all, I don't want to live in the big city, I live in Lincoln County because I like living in a rural area. But we could bring, and we have all these little boutiques in town, and I can only buy so many things from a boutique in town, but if we have people coming into our county, visitors who come just for a weekend, a short stay, they're the ones who will be coming through our, our town. We say how Washington's got all sorts of stuff, and, and if we want, I don't own a little boutique, I'm not going to benefit from the people who are coming here, I'm just saying, we have lots of boutiques in Lincoln County, we have a market in Lincoln County, and they could benefit from having people come. If you look on the site, they're not cheap, these are not fifty-dollar-a-night rooms, it's adults-only, they can come and spend money. So I think that, take it all into consideration when you buy a property. I remember years ago, Mom and Larry were talking about building a house up on top of the hill near the airstrip, and the reason they didn't is because you never know what the people behind you may put there, and that's just part of life, it's part of property ownership. Somebody could build something, my, my property right behind my barn belongs to somebody else, they could put something there that I might not want there, and we have to look at it as, do we want somebody coming and telling us what we can and cannot do, and, I mean, I already have enough issues with some of the silly regulations that Georgia and Lincoln County has, have set up. Do I want somebody coming in and telling me I can't paint my door a certain color, or I can't add on to my house over this way? I mean, if we would step back, it's so easy to say, they shouldn't let people do such and such. Well, "they" means big, overreaching government, and I am totally anti-big, overreaching government. Let us make our own decisions and do our own things. Just think about Lincoln County as a whole, this kind of, the revenue that this would bring in for Dustin Grace, and Wingrose, and the other little boutique on the corner, and the, there's another boutique over there by the Mexican Restaurant. Lincoln County can only support so much stuff, there's not much to do in Lincoln County to earn money. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw a hand go up somewhere, come on.
Which way I live on, at twenty-one eighty-three Elberton Highway, Lincoln. Have to agree, it would bring in wonderful revenue, but I'm really upset because Shane has said so much, I mean, talking about gated property, like, where she can actually control. They're talking about, I had no idea that these were, some of them were vacation homes. So, in actuality, I think it does fall into the same. But also, if you're gonna have all these people, they're grown people that are gonna be visiting these sites, I can't afford to visit sites, and they're beautiful. You go in, and you're not gonna find a tiled bathroom in a dome anywhere, and what, what she's done already, she can make something spectacular. I've been to her home, well, not, I'm sorry, not her home, but coming down that road, I don't know how to explain it. I don't understand how it's gonna bring, bring the property value down because of what I've seen as I'm going to the property. As far as looking into a dome, unless you're right outside the dome or right there with binoculars, it's the only way you're gonna see anything because there's curtains and whatnot. They're only talking about this partial, this part, not everything else. I don't understand how you can say, okay, yes, and then, no, I must have made a mistake. There's so much that she can provide, and there's so much that she can help, these, they're, they're talking about residents, you figure, you've got fifty-three acres, I don't know how many acres you need to put a home on, but you're looking between three, five, or more. At least you only have, you're only having people, grown people, and if you're camping, a lot of people know, when you're camping, you're going in one end and coming out the other, it's all controlled, it's in that area. Just give her a chance. Give, give Lincoln County a chance. Like I said, there's so much that she did not say here today because she probably thinks everyone has their mind already made up, I don't know. But please, give it sincere thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there another?
My name's Linda Bushing, I live at eleven twenty-five Sims Road in Lincoln. It's not near the Glamp Inn, but I've been to the Glamp Inn, and it's gorgeous. My issues are the fact that Shane was given a permit. Grant you, she did let it expire, but by not granting her another permit, what message are you sending to future businesses coming into Lincoln? Yes, it may have been a mistake on the zoning board first time around, but I, I think this woman has put her life, her heart, all of her money into this, and I just think it's disgusting that you would not let her continue.
I saw one more, yes, ma'am, Ms. Iler, well, there's two more. Ms. Iler, I've got one behind you.
To the commissioner board.
Pull that down.
To the commissioner board, Lake Shore Estates.
Name and address.
I'm sorry. My name is Teresa Wimbush, I am a resident of Lincoln County, my address is eleven nineteen Curry Circle. The Glamp Inn, when it first came in in 2021, all of the talk was, hey, I got to get, it's nice, it's nice, it's nice. Looking over throughout the years and then to hear that the special use for the expansion of some ideas that Ms. Stewart has to put up on her fifty-three acres of land, whatever she want to do, it's, I didn't see anything wrong with that, okay, and you got twelve families, there's twelve dwelling units, homes, I don't know the acreage, then you hear hundreds of people, been office since 2021, like I say, I haven't heard anything through the county that anything wrong, or vandalism to anybody's properties that went on out through there, up on Seventy-Nine. So, it just, from me being there, meeting and hearing a whole lot of, it wasn't fit to be in Lake Shores, it wasn't, they didn't want them roaming on their dogs, their legs, I mean, so, just give her the chance to see, because it would still be in the eyes of the people of the county for whatever penalties or to end whatever that she's doing if it's not in accordance to the county rules and regulations, I think. So Ms. Stewart, my hat goes off to you with the great idea that you brought into Lincoln County. Hey, maybe I'll think of something next.
Thank you.
My name is Julie Alhart. I also, when I give my address, I do not live on Lake Shore Drive, I live at thirty-five oh-five Pine Grove Church Road. I have been to the Glamp Inn, I have been inside all of the different buildings, whatever you want to call those particular things, they're definitely gorgeous, they're as pretty as any hotel room I've ever been in. My interest in the entire thing is, and I have been down that road, and I've never met an oncoming car, but that's okay, her idea is self-contained, I mean, it's all in one big thing over there, those fifty-three acres. She has some wonderful ideas, I was excited about the idea of a restaurant because I've eaten the food at the Glamp Inn, absolutely, I've been around the world three times, I've been on four or five cruises, I've never eaten food as good as what I ate at the Glamp Inn. But what I was excited for was the economic development idea. One of the ladies mentioned earlier, we have beautiful shops downtown, I can only buy so much. Those adults coming in there that are willing to spend the kind of money they have to spend to stay in that unique environment are going to be a bonus to anybody that has a business in Lincoln. I do not own a business, doesn't affect me, but it's going to affect the other businesses in town, and it could be exactly the economic boost that we need in this town. I think before any decision is made, that you ought to carefully examine her drawing and her ideas, and give this woman a chance. What she has done with the Glamp Inn is just amazing, it's amazing, and I've been around the world, like I said, three times. So I'm not talking about I've never been out of the area. I'm excited about the idea of the restaurant, I'm excited about the idea of some tree houses, I watch them on TV, but I'd love to see them here in Lincoln, and I'd like to see the economic development that will come from this particular venture. I'd like to see her get a chance to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Iler. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, to the other commissioners, and everyone else, the attorney, to all the Lincoln County citizens. I came up, you're telling me something, my name is Reven Denise Freeman, I'm on Freeman Starks Drive, off of Gilpoint Road. I've been a resident here for almost forty years, been a long time, welcome, Chairman. I saw this and heard about this some weeks ago about the turmoil, and I tried to educate myself, and I was coming here just to observe, but when God says stand up and speak, that's what I do. Mr. Chairman, you know, years ago, as I was on the Recreation Authority Development, and that's when the dog force came into Lincoln down on Double Branches, and that's when we tried to get the little park over there, right off the bridge out of Columbia County. We've always been a county that talked about bringing in things like this, and I wanted to go see it for myself, to see if there was any environmental issues, noise issues, et cetera, and so on, and when I saw it and went in, all I could do was cry because this is something that we desperately need for recreation. Adult recreation is awesome, that's where you get your businessmen, your corporate people, your professionals who come in, and maybe some of them are even looking to, if it's nice enough, they're saying, wow, we want to live here, we want to buy a house here, we want to buy some land here, we want to build homes here. This is how you bring economy to your county, so my taxes can go down. It's environmentally safe, everything there is by nature, she wants to bring in tree houses, horses, this is all natural. It will not hurt our environment. It's something that we're finally thinking of bringing in that will be an asset and a blessing to our environmental issues. And it will set off one of the things, as Mr. Norman has said for many, many years, our lake, our forest, and our land is what makes us the freshwater coast of Georgia. Did I quote you a little bit right?
You did.
Okay, so if we want to be that freshwater coast in 2024, if we want to be that attraction that brings people in, and maybe some of those corporate people from different counties and different states will come in and say, this is where we want to locate a business. This is where we see an industry for the local people to be able to get jobs. This is how we attract those people here without trying to finesse them and spend local tax dollars. This is a conduit to make us what we have dreamed for so long of becoming. And maybe if we let this particular entity do its thing, it will continue to put us on the map. I don't know if any of y'all have gone on and read the reviews, but the people who go there, they love it, and they want to come back, and they tell their friends about it. Look at the traffic that that one entity that's been here only 24 months or less has brought into this county. That's a blessing. That should be something we're embracing and not rebuking. That should be something we all want. It's not metal buildings. It's not storage sheds. It is actually beauty in nature. It's beautifying and accepting the nature. She didn't go up there and try to change the nature. She didn't go up there and cut down all the trees. She used it to glorify and beautify that area. Who would be against that? And sure, somebody may put some horses or goats behind me, but I got enough sense, if I don't want to look at the horses, put up a fence, but I like the horses. So there's always a different conduit when we live in a residential area. It doesn't mean that I can get rid of the lumber company who has that land lease and say every time they come, and they come in their 18-wheel log truck, it's noisy. They hear those saws and those skitters going for weeks and weeks and weeks at a time. But Mr. Norman, how many times have I called your office and complained? Those property owners have a right to do what they do. They have a right to harvest those trees every 20 years, and I just get used to it. I have deer hunters. They lease it out to deer hunters. I hear gunshots all during deer season. I thank God that they, my dog got enough sense now to stay out the woods when they in there because one of the deer hunters killed my Alaskan Malamute. But the thing is, you learn to get along with your neighbors. You learn to love, and that's what we need in this county and in this country and in this world right now. Where is the love? Where is the accept, the acceptance? Where is the brother and sisterhood? Where is that we love our neighbor as we love ourselves? Not going to always agree with you, Mr. Norman, you know that. You're not going to always agree with me. But one time, one thing I told you a long time ago, there's nothing you can ever do to make me hate you. You know why? Because God says love, and I will always love and respect you. We ain't going to disagree on everything, but I don't agree with Barry on everything, and he my husband. So, but we learn from our differences. We learn from each other. So we have been, remember when we tried to get the resort over on Bethany Church Road?
I do.
And so this is something that's smaller, but it's doing the same thing. If we, as the lady who came up prior to me, who so eloquently said, give her a chance to succeed. Give the Glampin' the opportunity to do today what we couldn't do yesterday. Thank you so much. May God continue to bless you all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, that concludes the public hearing. It's now motion that we go out of our public hearing and back into the commission meeting.
I'd like your motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion to come out of the public hearing? There is none, all the public emotional left, you know what I'm saying, aye? All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. We are in our regular commission meeting. We have a recommendation from the Planning Commission on the 53.40 acres, nothing to do with the part that she's on today. This is only affecting the 53 acres that we have. We have, this is for a special use request to operate the Glampin' retreat in an R2 zone. The recommendation from the Planning Commission is to deny the special use request. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
That's a move, Mr. Chairman.
Our motion is our second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman, just to bring it to a vote.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion by members of the commission? Any commissioner have any comment?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Is there any possible way that this thing could be amended with buffers or something like that to the adjacent property owners to make this thing?
I think you'd have buffers that would be in anyway. Buffer was in the existing. So I think buffers would be a part of what you would do. As far as buffering around the 52 acres, it's buffering around 79 of the other parts of property that it touches. Any other question?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask one about, she had two years to review, but didn't. Is that correct?
Correct, Ica, you might want to come to the public, but my understanding is why she's coming, that if we approve a rezoning or a special use, correct me if I'm wrong, you have 12 months in that time to start your project that we have approved for you to do. If you don't do it within the 12-month period of time, then it comes out. I think you can even come ask for an extension. But if you don't do it within that 12-month, the special use, all the zoning, if it was a zoning, from an R2 to an A1. If you don't do what you're doing within that 12-month period, then it comes out. And if you decide to do it later, which two years later, she's come back to redo it on the 53 acres. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Next to Henderson.
I was just going to ask, if we denied this tonight, how long would it be before she could try again?
12 months, is that correct? Come back up here. You might well stay. The question is, if we denied tonight, can she bring it back up after 12 months or what happens after?
Six months.
Six months.
She can come back in six months.
So if you denied tonight, she could come back within six months? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
That answer your question? Okay. We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission. All in favor of the motion, let it be known what I'm saying, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is carried to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission to deny. Let me make just a comment. We're going to move on, but we got a lot on this agenda. Ms. Stewart has met with me a time or two over the last few years. Always a lady. Always has a vision of what she wants to do. I appreciate and I like the vision that she has. The only problem that we got is that the county in 2003 put all these regulations in, whether we like them or not. I would hate to know that we had a county that you could just do whatever you wanted to, any way you want to do. That doesn't work anywhere, except in a third-world country. We are going to have regulations, they here, they in every county. You know, whether you like it or not, I mean, I think it would be a chaotic place to live if we didn't have any control of anything that happened as to where it happened. We have a comprehensive plan that's been in business and updated every five years. I'm speaking, I hope, for the entire commission, but I'm speaking for Wal. I like the concept of the Glampin'. We gave, we gave her on the recommendation of the Planning Commission three years ago in '21, a special use in an R2 zone. Probably didn't have any business to do. You know, probably to, we didn't. We didn't go by what we're supposed to do. I think a mistake was made. Now we are back. It has nothing to do with where her, where she's got now, where her Glampin' business is located. Doesn't affect any of it. She's got it. She's there, and she can continue to be there. I think that we would be very wrong to continue to put something in a residential area that's not residential. It's a business, and it's a good business. And I hope and pray that she succeed. But to go in and to put a business in a residential area is not what our growth management plan says to do. I support the idea. Ms. Stewart, I hope me and you can have a conversation after this is over. I would support it. We got places I think that it could happen that's not zoned residential. What are we going to do when the next resident, something comes in a residential area and they want to put something else there that's not, that's a commercial business? That's not what you do in a residential area. We support it. We support growth. Ms. Freeman was exactly right. You know, you got tranquility all over Lincoln County. And I think within these 207 square miles and all this property that the co-engineer owns that they don't give us all anything for, that we could find a place that this could work. I would like to work with you, Ms. Stewart, to find somewhere on a bigger place for this work. It's a perfect idea. Our little town has changed as much and has changed more in the last three years than it has the last 30 years. I'm talking about downtown Lincoln with our specialty shops. You know, I have people, friends in Augusta tell me, they make a day trip to Lincoln Town now just to come into these shops, and we got more coming. Told yesterday, we got a new one coming downtown next to the outer ring. We need people to come and support these things. But we are not trying to stop Ms. Stewart from having a Glampin'. In fact, in fact, when it was first done, I didn't even know what a Glamp was. She had to explain it to me. It's unique. And it's something, it's something that can fit in the boundaries of Lincoln County. I personally have a lot of concern of being in a residential area. That's the only problem. If that was, if that area was zoned A1, it wouldn't happen. But she, it's a lot to do when you do this. But we support you with the Glampin' Inn. I think we got, we in the wrong location, and I want to support you in the right location. But with that said, I think that I just want you to know we want to work with you, and I would like to talk to you sometime when it's over. We voted, didn't we? Okay, with that concluded, we voted and accepted the recommendation. We're going to move on down the agenda to item number eight. You would? Come on, we're going. I don't know you. So state your name and address. Pull it like from the grid you will.
You want to go ahead and say what it was on the agenda?
Huh?
You want to say what it was on the agenda?
Yeah, yeah. Item number eight is my loss of confidence in government.
First of all, I'd love to say I love Lincoln County. I've been here for a long time. I've known you since I was a kid. My dad moved up here after going to work for Georgia Pacific as a chief tech. Ernie saved my dad's life, gave me that 25 years with my dad. I know each and every one of you very well. No super. I'll be waiting for you to come here. But I've had issues, big issues. Like you said, this county's changed. And I ain't got a problem saying we got riffraff coming. We've got some terrible stuff coming into this county. Dope has gotten bad here. And I personally feel, back in June, of June 11th, 2020, I went to our chair about a drug issue up by my house. When I talked to him, I asked him about it, told him I needed help with it. He told me we can't be everywhere all the time. Now, I know we're short-staffed. I understand that. But he didn't even want to give me the time. I mean, no, can you come see me and we'll discuss it? Nothing. It shunned me off. I mean, I've tried to be good to everybody in this county. I've always helped everybody. I've never left a resident on the side of the road and not stop. Tried to be a good steward. So the problem just kept on and on, and it finally got just intolerable. And I ain't got a bunch of people that live down there by me. I live on a private drive that I maintain. Been maintaining it since 1997. And nobody else put no money in it. My one neighbor, Dan, he's took the tractor to it a couple of times and straightened the driveway, which I greatly appreciate. He's worked with me. I've bought the truck and run, and he's used his tractor. He's kind of, I think, hesitant to say anything. I'm not hesitant to say anything about not wanting hard drugs around my home. Ain't nothing like coming home and seeing a drug dealer pull out of your driveway. Because the neighbor, his driveway's so messed up, he can't get in and out of it with a regular car, so the drug dealer's copying his driveway and back back into mine, and they do their transaction and leave. So in September, around September 26th or 29th, I ain't sure on the date, I finally got fed up. I come home. Dan had to pick cameras up and put lights up because there was people coming in and out at night. So I'm coming in, and I see pretty sketchy character coming down the driveway. And I went straight to light and type. I did. And I told him, if you don't get this fixed, I'm going to be coming up in front of the commission. Well, what you know, October 7th, they bust two people down there. One convicted felon with possession of a firearm and scheduled two narcotics. And then they ended up getting the drug dealer too, with scheduled two narcotics and intent to distribute. Well, like cockroaches, when you kill one, another one comes back. And I'm tired of it. I mean, it's devaluing my property. And like these people here, I want my safety. I don't like leaving my house. I kind of got a problem because I know when people get on hard dope like that, they get psychotic. And I had them actually, just this past week, call me a drug addict on Facebook. Facebook took it down because they knew it was slanderous. So I'm through with that. How y'all enforce our county codes? I brought up that landfill down there in Maxim. It was on 1421 Maxim Road. Now it's on 1537. That property got sold. I came to Mr. Cooper. got sold. I came to, uh, Mr. Cook Clyde in twenty twenty, hang your home, and we talked about it. Me and Mr. Stan Tankersley talked about it. I think it is the county's responsibility to mark that landfill on a map so people in the future don't build on that. I would like to think that y'all would, y'all wouldn't want to go buy a piece of property and find out it had a landfill on it, and your county gov, the county government knew about it the whole time and didn't want it marked, or didn't mark it because they just wanted to kind of run away from it for whatever reason. Y'all, I, I don't know what it is. Y'all kind of want to deny it. But it is there, and I gave you photos, and I can give you the GPS coordinates to the center of it. Nigga. Um, and then this tiny home stuff, that's just like this residential area. You know, they're pitching tents in a R two district. Now, I wanted to put a tiny home up for my son off that private road away from nobody. Nobody could see it. I wasn't allowed to. And then I got to looking around, and people were talking, and there was another person that did put a tiny home in. It was actually a, a shed, and they stuck it underneath a hay shed. And they said that it was now a thousand square foot under roof. And when you're talking about building codes and stuff and square footage, you're talking about actual livable space or a footprint. You're not talking about under roof. Our county code does not say under roof. If that was the case, I could build a two hundred square foot house and have eight hundred square foot of porch, and I'd be legal. And we know that's not right. I do know that there's people that, if they come up here on A three property, and somebody wants to come in and cut a road, dig a well, put a septic system in, that ain't gonna be riffraff. And I know we, we don't want, I, I don't want, I'll tell you right now. I understand people that have a past and want to move somewhere else and change and, you know, start all over again. But people that want to carry on their bad ways and come here, I don't think they deserve to live in our county, and I don't want them here. And I don't have a problem playing it in front of the world. Now, I, I mean, that's just the way I feel, and I'd appreciate it if y'all start looking into some of this stuff. Thank you very much.
I don't normally do this, but I'm gonna make a comment about the landfill. He's talking about on property down Maxim Road that Hamilton Dawkins owned at one time. It's documented that the county had EPD down there three different times. We went down on that property, I didn't, but the county did so many times that the owner said that we were harassing him. The county did their responsibility. We called EPD. We had EP down there. They couldn't find the landfill. If Lincoln County officials, me included, found a landfill that somebody was doing, then we knew it, and EPD did it, it would be shut down. I don't know whether there's a landfill down there or not. I know you through. I don't know if there's a landfill down there or not. But if it is, let's get EPD back down there and see if we can uncover the landfill. If somebody has done that, we want to fix it. We not throwing nothing under the rug. EPD three times was called down there. Now, I'm not saying it is or it's not down there, but the information that was given to us and our code enforcement was it was not a landfill down there. Now, if there's a landfill down there, we need, EPD needs to know it, and Lincoln County needs to know it. I don't, I don't know whether there's a or not. We couldn't find it. That's all I get there. Okay, item number ten. No, it's not. We're coming back to Ms. Mims. I think you next. Is that right? She comes back under. This is the grant for the leisure services. Come on. No, I'm, I'm wrong. Sit, sit right there. Mr. Kenny, you are right. That's what happens when you change these agendas, and I can't read my own writing. You are, you are next.
I'll try to be the
Mister, uh, Kendler is here on item ten for a temporary alcoholic license, and it's, and it's two of them.
Yes, I'll try to be the shortest one tonight. We, um, we have a, an alcohol license for the American Legion Post one nine four. We have two events coming up. Um, we're looking to do a temporary alcohol license out on the field for a car show, February seventeenth. Um, and then we're also looking for, and then for, uh, we have, um, local law enforcement that's gonna be there, legion members working concession stand and signage, like no alcohol passed the point on the field. And then the second one will be a larger event. That's the Beer for Good Festival. We had twelve hundred people last year at ten. Um, four deputies ran from, uh, nu, or, uh, noon to nine, and we, um, served alcohol on the field. And I'm looking for, um, granted for a temporary permit for like outside, outside usage and sale of alcohol on the, um, the legion grounds.
Okay, I know what you're talking about. Our ordinance says that, um, they have, it allows for this to happen, but they, they can do it twice. Twice.
That is correct.
Currently, that's what it is.
Currently.
So, Madam Clerk, would you, is he in compliance with everything, and that we can now issue both of these permits?
Yes, sir. He has met our record, our requirements.
Sorry. This is the American Legion Post one ninety-four, and they are asking for the special permit to sell on the outside the two of them.
Correct. So, so alcohol out of the concession stand, out on the, uh, the fairgrounds.
Right. All right. All in compliance. All we got to do is vote to do it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is our motion, we vote to grant the two, well, the two dates, you, you put the dates in a minute. I know one of them is, save your word for the
Car show in April for the Correct. April twentieth for the Beer for Good.
Beer for Good.
Posted by, uh, Backstop Brewery.
Okay, you, you got all this down?
Yes, sir.
Just what the motion is. Uh, we are granting this for y'all.
Thank you very much.
Now, motion, it will approve.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. End discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of motion, let be known, say an aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, item number, I guess we're going now to eleven. Now, I'd be confused all the way through. So this is, she's asking for a EO grant for the leisure services. Director Mims.
There. Okay, so we, um, previously were granted, or given a grant, we received a grant from the CSRA Economic Opportunity Authority for up to seventy-two hundred dollars to be used for, excuse me, payroll for the activities director position. We are trying to get that grant reinstated. We're working with them, and I just, um, I need approval to move forward.
Are we approving to get, take the grant, or are we approving for her to apply for the grant?
We are approving to receive the grant, Chairman.
Got them. I don't believe we're voting no doubt to receive it. I think it's up to seventy-two hundred. It could be less, but it's up to seventy-two hundred, and we are making a motion that, um, I need a motion that we accept this grant up to seventy-two hundred dollars.
Right.
For a, to help pay the person that does the activities that leisure service. Is our motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
This is a second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Collins. End discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of motion, let be known, say an aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carried. Now we are at, thank you.
Thank you.
And you're welcome to leave. We, um, we at item twelve now.
Just go ahead with the
All right, we at item twelve, replace eleven, FY twenty-five, Family Connection Physical Agent Director Dulles.
Chairman Norman.
Board of Commissioners, um, I would like for you all to be the physical agent for Lincoln County for Family Connection FY twenty-five.
Okay, we've been doing this for many, many years. We have to do it, what, every year, every two years? Is our motion to Lincoln County be, continue to be the physical agent for the Lincoln County Community Partnership?
So move.
Second.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Tankersley. End discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of motion, let be known, say an aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
Go on, pray for us.
Yes, sir.
All right, item number
Thirteen.
Thirteen is the FY twenty-four GMA statewide mutual aid agreement. Director Broom sent me a message a while ago. Uh, he's still out at the office, but we know what it is. Anyway, we talked about it at the work session. Um, this is where we were going to put the equipment on.
No, sir.
No, I'm ahead of myself.
Yes, sir.
I'd help, help me out, call it, this is the, this is the statewide mutual aid agreement that we have that really required. We all familiar with it. Is our motion that we accept the, um, statewide mutual aid agreement?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
The second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins. End discussion. Chair is none, all in favor of motion, let be known, say an aye. All right, now we at fourteen, which is the fire truck equipment. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Director Broom is not here. This is, um, in the work session, I think when we send it up here, I'm showing thirty-six thousand seven hundred dollars. Did we round that off to forty, or did we not?
Fifty.
Fifty. I don't remember my notes for from that one. Okay, we are
Reason being, up to fifty, I think Chairman tells they didn't know about the hoses on the truck.
Right.
Whether or not those are going to be replaced or not.
So we are approving this up to fifty thousand dollars to get truck number eleven ready.
And that's a red.
This will be paid for with Special Purple Local Office of Seven. Is our motion?
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I'll second, Mr.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins. End discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of motion, let be known, say an aye. All right, number fifteen is the
Grant.
Huh?
Five Works Tax Grant.
Okay, that's the Five Works Tax Grant. All right, I got it. We discussed this at the work session, too. This will offset the up to fifty thousand dollars that we just approved from Spash. If we are successful in getting this grant after he applies for it, this, this is up to twenty-five thousand dollars with a ten percent, uh, county match if we get it. That be, that will save us money on the other side. The motion is to allow Director Broom to apply for this grant. Is our motion?
I'll make motion, Mr. Chairman.
Our motion is our second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. End discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of motion, let be known, say an aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carried. Number sixteen, detainee contract extension for Ford Eisenhower, Director Dulles.
Chairman Commissioners, uh, as we discussed at the work session, we currently have a contract to house detainees for Ford Eisenhower. That contract runs through, um, FY twenty-five. Uh, Ford Eisenhower has asked us for a three-year extension, a letter supporting a three-year extension, uh, at the following rates, uh, FY twenty-six, a hundred and eighteen dollars per person per day, FY twenty-seven, a hundred and thirty dollars per person a day, and FY twenty-eight, a hundred and forty-three dollars a, a, a person a day. Uh, the sheriff is agreeable to the extension, and I'm asking the board to authorize Chairman to, uh, send a letter to, uh, Ford Eisenhower that we are agreeable to extend the detainee to housing for three additional years.
Is our motion that we extend the contract with Ford Eisenhower with the numbers presented?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Collins. End discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of motion, let be known, say an aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carried. Item seventeen is FY twenty-three General Fund Budget Year End Amendment, Director Dulles.
Chairman Commissioners, I'm going to read the following resolution. State of Georgia, County of Lincoln, resolution. Approval of amended annual, uh, balance budget general fund for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Whereas the amended annual balance general fund budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three was adopted by the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners on September twentieth, twenty twenty-two, as required by Article One, Chapter eighty-one of Title Thirty-six of the Official Code of Georgia Annotated, OCG, and whereas Section thirty-six dash eleven, excuse me, thirty-six dash eighty-one dash three D of the Official Code of Georgia provides that local government budgets may be amended to adapt to the changing governmental needs during the budget period, and that such amendments shall be adopted by ordinances or resolution. Now, therefore, it being resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Lincoln County, Georgia, and it is hereby resolved by the authority of saying that amendments to the annual balance general fund budget for the fiscal year twenty-three beginning on July one, twenty twenty-two, and ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in the form attached here, too, are hereby adopted, duly read and approved and adopted by the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners this eighth day of February twenty twenty-four, and it has a signature page. But the, uh, Chairman, if it's okay with you, I will only read the, the departments that have, uh, changed.
That's good.
Uh, Board of Tax Assessors, original budget, two hundred and six thousand, one hundred and thirty, thirty-two dollars. The change is thirteen thousand, uh, thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars for a final budget of two hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and seven. Board of Elections, original budget, a hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars, change sixty-three, six, six thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars for a new budget of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars. The Building and Grounds Budget, original budget, one million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five, a decrease of two hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars for a new budget of four hundred, excuse me, a new budget of nine hundred and forty-five thousand, nine, two hundred and ninety-two dollars. The Tomb Circuit Judicial Court, uh, cost share, original budget, sixty-two thousand, ninety-five dollars, increase three hundred and ninety dollars, total of sixty-two thousand, four, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. The Probate Magistrate Court, original budget, two hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars, increase five hundred, five thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars, uh, final budget, two hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars. Sheriff's Office, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, sixty-four dollars, increase sixty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-one, final budget, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-five. Jail, original budget, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight, increase ten thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars, final budget, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-six. Office of Emergency Services, original budget, one million, one hundred and three thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, increase forty-nine hundred and fifteen dollars, um, final budget, one million, one hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and forty-six. Coroner's Office, original budget, eight, eighteen thousand, five hundred and four dollars, increase sixty-six hundred and thirteen dollars, final budget, twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seventeen. The Road Department, original budget, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred, excuse me, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars, decrease one hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and five dollars, final budget, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-two. The L-MIG State Road Grants, original budget, uh, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars, increase one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty, final budget, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-three. County Shop, original budget, six hundred and sixty-six thousand and six dollars, increase forty-nine hundred and sixty-five dollars, final budget, seven thousand, nine, seven thousand, nine hundred and seven, seventy thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one. Getting tongue-tied, sir. Senior Citizens Budget, seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars, increase eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine, final budget, one hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Recreation, one hundred and five thousand, six hundred and one dollars, increase twenty-five thousand, sixty-four dollars, final is one seventy-five, six, sixty-seven. And finally, in the general fund, the planning, uh, permits, twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars, the, uh, increase of, uh, seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars, final budget, thirty-six hundred and, thirty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. This is budget neutral. The original budget was eight million, three hundred and eleven thousand, fifty-six dollars. The final budget is eight million, three hundred and eleven thousand, fifty-six dollars.
So they all offset it when you got through it all in, and it, and it's balanced up in the zero. Is our motion that we approve the budget amendments, and we need to sign the resolution before we leave tonight? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We need to sign.
All right, is our motion?
I'm like motioners, too.
We got them quick. Got a motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde. End discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of motion, let be known, say an aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carried. Item number eighteen. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item number eighteen, FY, all other funds. If you hit that quick, go ahead.
Chairman, if, as long as the attorney doesn't mind, when I start reading, if you want to pass the first part, I can just read the amendments, because it's the exact same resolution on the beginning part. All right. State of Georgia, County of Lincoln, Resolution. Approval to amend the annual balance budget for all other funds.
I'll ask for the speech another reading. If, I have objection. Any objection to the speech another reading? Chair is none. Spend it, don't read it no more. Tell us the best of it.
All right, sir. I will only read the three budgets that changed. The jail fee budget, original budget, sixty-seven hundred dollars, an increase of sixty-three hundred dollars. Final budget, thirteen thousand dollars. The Workforce Development Fund, file, the original budget was one-point-five million dollars, one, one-million, five-hundred thousand dollars. An increase of six-hundred-and-eleven thousand. The final budget was two-million, one-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars. Chairman, I would like to say that these were all grant funds. None of these, the workforce development budget, none of these were county funds. They're all passed through for the state, and we passed them through to another entity. The Transportation SPOSS Fund, the original budget was eight-hundred and three, eight-hundred thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars, an increase of three-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-eleven dollars. The final budget is one-million, is one-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, one-hundred, one-million, one-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, sixty-one dollars. These budgets did increase. The original all funds budget was seven-million, eight-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars. There was a nine-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, eleven-dollar increase. The final budgets are eight-million, eight-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety. Chairman, we need a, a motion to accept the resolution and, and have it signed.
That one budgeted neutral, too.
Uh, these are budget, these, these were increases in revenues and expenses in there, so they are still budget neutral within the budgets.
Is our motion we adopt the resolution on the budget amendment for all other funds?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Our motion by Commissioner Collins.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Henderson, in discussion on the motion. Chair is none all in favor of motion, let be known saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item number nineteen is the Compensation and Classification Study Proposal. We discussed this at the work session, Director Dulles.
Chairman Commissioners, I'll make this one quick. I'm asking for your approval for sixteen thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-five dollars for the University of Georgia Carl Benson Institute to conduct a classification and salary study for Lincoln County. They would begin work on April the first of this year, and they would give us a deliverable by September the thirtieth. They will make recommendations to us on a payroll structure, as well as updating our job descriptions and classifying all of our employees. The only people that won't be included in this are the constitutional officers. Their employees will, but the state sets salaries for elected officials and our part-time seasonal and temporary employees.
Okay, is our motion that we contract with the Carl Benson Institute to govern the University of Georgia for this... For the, for the study, and the cost of sixteen thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, I think you told us at the work session, this be paid in the general fund, but it come into new budget after July the first. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Another ten of motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins, in discussion on the motion. Chair is none all in favor of motion, let be known saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item number twenty, landfill mitigation costs with the Environmental Protection Division Director Fisher.
Uh, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I have a landfill mitigation cost. A recent visit by the EPD indicated that we do have some discrepancies in our landfill as far as the cow and two wheels. Total cost for the mitigation is thirty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty dollars, and I'll be asking the chairman and the board to approve that.
Okay, you heard that? That be paid for out of the solid waste fund. We're proving up to forty-five thousand?
Thirty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty dollars.
How in the world I can get forty-five on here?
Chairman.
I, I think we added some to it, Director Dulles.
Yes, sir, Chairman. Even though Director Fisher wasn't there at the meeting, even though he added a contingency, I ask you to add an additional contingency.
I actually took away contingency that he added.
You asking for thirty-five, one-twenty, just in case something we, we...
Forty-five.
Up to forty-five.
Yes, that'd be great.
So you'll get your thirty-five.
Yes.
All right, we know what we're doing. Is that, is our motion that we approve this? I don't want all y'all giving a motion at one time. I can't.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Tinkus. Is there any questions about this?
I have a question about...
Mr. Tinkus.
Uh, the contingency fund, that instead of five thousand, it's fifteen thousand now. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
Good job, boy. That's included in there. Any other questions? Chair is none all in favor of the motion, let be known saying aye. Don't get slow, too. Move the passes. All right, item twenty-one is the County Easement Attorney Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, as y'all are aware, this occurred at the corner of Reed Road and Highway two-twenty. Uh, there are several parcels now for sale on Highway two-twenty, and someone doing a title search found that there is actually a very tiny sliver of, I'm imagining, a piece of dirt that is actually considered as an old county road. And under the law, the purchasers of the real estate would be allowed to use the old county road. However, the real estate lawyers feel like it would make the title a lot cleaner if the county would be willing to convey an easement to the purchasers so that by law they would be allowed to traverse over that easement and get to their land, and there wouldn't be any issue about being able to cross that property.
Okay, we said the other day, three months, ninety days ago, we didn't even know that existed. We didn't even know that was there on that piece, that little piece that was left over. Probably in the early nineteen hundreds when you paid two-twenty, left a little piece over there, and you can't get to the property that's on it. Is it not true that this will follow the deed perpetually from now on?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, unless the state decides to widen the road, then they would, in essence, take it over.
Okay. But maybe they're forelaying that road. Okay, is there a motion that... What's his motion need to be?
That we convey, or the commission conveys easements to those property owners so that they can get in and out of their property.
Okay, the, the motion that we grant the easement to the property owner, will they get to the property?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson, in discussion on the motion. Chair is none all in favor of motion, let be known saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. You gonna take care of all that, right?
Yes, yes.
We too win it. It's yours.
Yes, sir.
Handle it. Item number twenty-two, we need to extend the mortarium on solar farms. We have a resolution in here, but we not gonna read all that. Take that one. Um, we discussed this, too. How, how many days, what, what did we do this for?
Hundred and eighty days.
All right, six months. We extended the mortarium on solar farms for a hundred and eighty days. Is our motion, we got to approve the resolution?
I made a motion.
That's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner, five, second by Commissioner Henderson, in discussion on the motion of the resolution for the extension of the mortarium on solar farms. Chair is none all in favor of motion, let be known saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item twenty-three is ASA painting. ASA Painters is company out of Washington, Georgia. We have some... We have some bad places in the road, on the road that goes to Cherokee. Beach and Key Club or something is overlooked road down there. It's priced, and I, I would like to do this all inclusive, but the price on that one, to, to do that one, no, I can't do it. I can't do it together, because they pay it differently. Is that correct, Arden?
Yes, sir.
All right, this is forty-five hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixteen cents. To patch that, that road on Cherokee Road, and that be played, paid for out of T-SPOSS. Is our motion that we do?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Now, a motion by Commissioner Tinkus, this is second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Collins, in discussion on the motion. Chair is none all in favor of motion, let be known saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Okay, the next one is Overlook Road. That road is in terrible condition, and in fact, it's in such bad condition, we're gonna take the asphalt and redo it. We got a grant, an L-MIG special grant in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars. The cost of it is two-hundred-and-six thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars, and I think that's sixty-eight cent. My hole's cutting it, which means that the county would have to come up with approximately seventy-nine thousand to go along with the L-MIG grant, especially the L-MIG grant. We got to pad this road, but the total cost of it is two-hundred-and-six thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and and sixty-eight cents. And this will be paid for, our, our cost will be up to about eighty thousand, seventy-nine, something to eighty thousand, and it will be paid out of ARP funds. And, is our motion that we do this?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Tinkus. Is that in your district, Commissioner Tinkus?
It'll be mine now. Yes, sir. Would redistrict me.
Well, you ought to been making that.
I was trying to.
You ought to been making that motion quick.
Anytime you put asphalt down, I'm gonna vote for it.
All in favor of motion, let be known saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. One more on this one. Now, we discussed it as to how we wanted to, but let me, let me say this. This is the walking track at Complet. It's asphalted, I don't know how many years it been there, but that's the original, the re-aspot that before it gets the shape of overlooked road, we got to take all that asphalt up going around it, too. We probably need to go ahead and and resurface that. That's in the amount of sixteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents, and we ARP with that, too. Is that correct? All right, is there a motion that we do?
I made the motion.
Is it a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
You go out there and walk, don't you?
Yeah, right.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner...
Collins.
Collins. Second by Commissioner Collins. In the discussion. Chair is none all in favor of the motion, let be known saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, and I did talk with the man, and he took the two-thousand-dollar mobilization off. He not gonna pay that.
That's great.
Okay, we got all, Chair, you got all that. Well, we know how to pay all this stuff.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a motion that we go into executive session, discuss legal matters with the county attorney?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tinkus, second by Commissioner Clyde to go into executive session, in discussion on the motion. Chair is none all in favor of motion, let be known saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. We'll be back in a little bit. Okay, uh... Mr. Jackson, would you like to discuss what we did in executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You're, uh, Mr. Chairman, the law allows the Board of...
Excuse me, Chairman. You, you need a motion to come out of executive session, sir. Is that correct?
That would be correct, yes, sir.
I need to do that before we do that. Okay. Now, motion, we come out of executive session.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson, in discussion on the motion. Chair is none all in favor of motion, let be known saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. We out of executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the law allows the Board of Commissioners to go into executive session for several specific reasons. Buying and selling real estate, leasing real estate and personal property, lawsuits involved, actual lawsuits, and I, I'm just stating today for the record that those specific requirements were met, and those were the issues that were addressed in the executive session. No other business was addressed, and no vote was taken.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, you heard what we did in executive session. We did nothing. Is there a motion that we adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Tinkus, second by Commissioner Henderson, in discussion on the motion. Chair is none all in favor of motion, let be known saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried, and we adjourn.